So we're gonna call our meeting to order. And I believe the first order of business is we're gonna open a public hearing, per RSA 3195B. And we will be opening the public hearing for the purpose of accepting the assistance to firefighters' grant funds from FEMA in the amount of $71,800.95. So we'll...
And second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was just to open?
To open, correct.
So you have to close it later?
Correct. Yep.
Does it have to be open for a certain amount of time? Is there a requirement?
Nope. We've got discussion.
Yeah.
I think we could probably leave it open or...
Yeah.
And if you want to do something else.
Yeah.
Um, so why don't we move on to... You wanna sign stuff? What do you think?
Sure.
Is there anybody appearing for the public hearing on...
We don't know. It's scheduled at 6 o'clock, so we'll have to wait.
Oh, it's scheduled until 6?
Yeah. See what time, whether somebody shows up or not.
Okay.
So I figured the 5 o'clock public hearing we open, see if anyone wants to come address, and then at some point we can close it.
Okay.
And then at 6, we'll open the public hearing for the obnoxious unit.
Okay.
Alright, so to sign. Alright, so this is the accounts payable manifest in the amount of... Cal, a million dollars?
Yes, you are.
Okay, $1,000,000, $10,026.41. So moved.
And seconded. What part of that was that the greater in there?
The road greater for $425.
$425.
And the school payment.
Oh, okay.
It has to be a school payment.
That'll do it.
Alright.
Are we all set? Did we motion and seconded?
I don't know.
Not motion.
Yeah, seconded.
It was kind of a question, sure. I don't say anything, we can't vote on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Kent, I felt the same way, see that amount, it's a scary amount.
You didn't have to sign the check for the greater, that was scary.
Here. I always bring extras.
We now have extras here.
Oh, good to know. Good to know. Alright, Cal, I'm gonna hand it up directly to you. And then do you want the payroll when I'm done with that too?
Um, that's the math. Accounts payables, they only have to send to ours.
Yeah. Some big numbers in there.
Yeah. I meant to look at this today, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Look, thank you. Alright, next is the payroll manifest in the amount of $48,557.2. So moved.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't know about the 2 cents, but we'll take that.
Alright, so that's... Thank you. I'll just put this here. Alright, next is the appointment slip for Jordan Westgate, who we swore in on the 23rd of September, as a member. So we just need to sign.
That's odd, why didn't slip come after the swearing?
Well...
We didn't have it.
Oh.
That one's on us.
That's easy enough.
But we pivoted, did a dance, and nobody did.
Wow.
Except that one.
Now everybody knows. I did get my tour of the...
Oh, good for you.
Of the facility he was taking classes.
Good. Alright, next, I have an appointment slip for Beth Blair for the Tricentennial Committee.
Yes, please.
Sorry.
This is as a resident, not as a select worker.
Yes, that's why we're gonna make it separate.
I believe, at least I'm told, my volunteer is a member of the staff.
Can I sign my own?
Sure. I don't see why you can't. It's not like you're gonna gain anything for it, other than another...
Except some work.
Yeah.
According to the minutes, Scott, you have volunteered to be the whatever.
I've been told. Alright, that brings us to...
Thanks.
Yep. Alright, thank you. I'll put that in the other. Alright, so the public minutes from September 23rd.
There's a few changes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Um, it's all typos.
Okay.
So there's line 175, deport should be depot.
Ah, okay.
Or depot, line 179, show should be showed, and line 292, appreciate should be appreciation.
Okay.
So those are all grammatical.
Anybody have anything else, any corrections? So moved.
No.
Okay, so moved to accept as amended.
Yeah.
Looking for a second?
Uh, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And that's September 23rd, is that the...
That is correct, September 23rd, yep. Alright, so moving on to the executive session of September 23rd also. And that should be in your folders, so we'll just take a minute to review.
I'll mark this up, this goes back.
Right.
You can mark it up, it's just, you're not gonna...
No, no, that's fine.
Looks good to me. I haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, looks good.
Looking for a motion? So moved.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And obviously...
I mean, can I take that?
Now Cal will put these directly to you.
Do you need to make a motion now to seal them, or was that already?
You already have this last one. It has to be done within 24 hours, so do it right after.
There he is. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you guys too. At least now I'm standing vertically and taking orders.
Alright, so we are down at... So I'm thinking Mr. Katz is here. Do you wanna go to that?
You shouldn't have anybody else coming.
This is Erin Hammerstedt, our new executive director.
Congratulations.
Jeff Dawson.
Cool. Um, even though you're early, if you wanna come on down?
Sure.
You can start talking.
Come on down, The Price is Right.
Do you have these copies?
No.
Please, someone thoughtfully made extra copies for you.
One thing I did notice is that there was some document that was due on the 23rd. What was that?
This, Beth.
That's the one.
This is the first time you've seen this.
Understood.
Erin, I'm remembering her name, just hope if it's so. And I can just spell your last name for you right here.
Absolutely. So you got the Erin, correct?
I did.
It's Hammerstedt.
That's just as it sounds.
It is, but it's long.
And is Erin E-R-I-F?
You got it.
Alright, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Just as a little bit of introduction, Erin has joined us on 3rd of September.
Yeah.
Just barely over a month ago. And she's already hosted the Simply Shaker event on the 5th, which turned out to be very successful.
Good.
We were able to raise $70,000 to fix the windows in the meeting house.
Pretty.
That's huge.
That's it, it's huge.
Yeah.
Absolutely huge.
Yeah.
You know, in that, in the course of the last month, Erin has... All I can say is, is I am going through withdrawal, considering all the things that Erin has now been able...
Quite a good feeling.
You know, in a way, it's kinda funny, because, you know, I get up in the morning and I used to say, "Okay, I gotta deal with this," or "I gotta deal with that, I gotta deal with this." And it's like, well, what am I gonna do today? But actually, I got plenty to do. Today's my third municipal...
And you don't really wanna fess up to Erin that you have nothing to do, Beth.
No, Hannah.
Probably not. It's not really a good thing to let someone know.
Like I said, today's my third municipal interaction. I had two in New Hampton today, and you guys are the third. So I hope the third one's a charm.
Yep, hopefully.
So where do you guys wanna go?
Let's see. Ken, what do you think? We'll start on this one, and I figured we could just sort of go, so it's the... The pages aren't numbered, but it's the one that starts with MAP and lot 228-001.
Is it two pages?
It is.
That one is double sided.
It's double sided, yeah.
So there's an extra copy that we can come if you wanna get some of it.
Okay.
I was at a loss there, I saw 228-001s.
Yeah, exactly.
Just so you understand what this is, basically, we made a little graph of the property, the property description, what the assessor, her finding, back when we did the tour of the facility, and then your response to the questions about that. And then we sent this off to the town council, so their response is there. And then the assessor had some recommendations for the board assignment. After sending out everything, so I've seen your response, town council's response, then she made some recommendations for the board assignment.
Now, can I just say, it's my understanding that the visit you referred to is in September of 2003?
Uh, no.
Or 2023, I'm sorry. 2023.
Yes.
2023.
Yes.
So it's well over a year ago.
Time flies in heaven, buddy.
Okay.
Alright, so here's what I'm thinking, just for the record. So we're gonna be discussing first lot 228-001, 228-008, 228-013, 242-005, and 242-007. I won't read the acreage description, but the assessor finding, what she refers to is current use enrollment. They have included all these parcels, recognizing they are taxable. I don't see a response from you.
We had no indication at the time, that I don't think the tax bill that we received gave us any indication. And let me just point out also that the very first indication we ever got of any kind of tax liability was when the bill showed up in June. We never got any notice between that September meeting and the time the tax bill showed up. We had no communication from the assessor. And out of the clear blue, a bill for $7,009 shows up. And that kinda, and I'll be honest, it really kinda disturbed me that we had no dialogue. Because you know, as well as I do, I've been trying to establish a decent communication relationship with them.
Yeah.
And, you know, to put it bluntly, I was very, very distressed over the fact that this just showed up the way it did.
Yeah.
Alright, the other thing that disturbs me a little bit regarding the big picture here is, is that from the time the tax bill showed up, my letter in June, plus the fact that we wanted to make the payment, you know, just to avoid any interest and penalties and things like that. I would have hoped or expected at least a courtesy call to say, "We're going through this stuff, can we talk about it?" We were in a complete dead silent period between the time I submitted my letter until we were able to arrange this meeting. You know, we reviewed the minutes, there were several opportunities, especially, I think, of this meeting on the 23rd, where you guys went through all those kinds of details. I would have hoped that we would have gotten the call saying, "Hey, we're gonna talk about this," at least intended to be. No communication whatsoever from the town.
Yeah.
Find that very disturbing. So I just wanted to go on record with that particular point. The issue over the current use was never addressed. You know, we didn't think it was anything that needed to be addressed. So this is a brand new issue for me.
Okay.
So I'll just speak for myself, again, you know that I'm new to this. But it's my understanding, I don't know, I come from an organization similarly, where we owned a lot of property in a national sort landmark village, a lot of acreage for conservation, and we had a very different relationship of what was taxable and what was not. So I'm familiar, and also this is new. Certainly, before we can respond, we're gonna need a chance to read this nature of conservancy case.
Understood.
Because it's our understanding that as a nonprofit who is conserving land for the public good, allowing the public to use the land for the public good, you know, obligated to do that for the public, that that is not taxable. So if that is taxable, that's new to us, and we need to understand why. Again, it never has been before, so why now?
Yeah.
So we'll need a little time to read to...
Understood. So I guess do we wanna continue on, or just give them an opportunity to review these documents before we regroup?
I mean, if you guys wanna have a discussion tonight about this, and just go down to them, that's fine. If you want to wait.
Well, what we can do is, we can just use the letter that I sent as the basis for a discussion, because that's now available to the town. You know, you understand what my view has been relative to some of the specific buildings. And, you know, we can at least discuss this. I'm not sure that we're really going to come to any real sense of an agreement or consensus tonight.
Understood.
But at least I think I have an opportunity to, you know, to at least put our case on the table, if you wanna call it that, and get your, you know, at least a reaction, if nothing else.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So if you guys, if I can just just for a minute, if you've had no communication from the town, what, how were you responding? What were you responding to when we had your response? What was... What did you get, and what were you responding to? Just the amount on your tax bill?
Right, the only communication we got from the town was the tax bills. Okay, we received one in June, which was the first part. Okay, and then the other issue that we're gonna have to address at some point is the application of the pilot payment. Alright, we could find absolutely no rule, regulation, or otherwise that would prevent the town from applying the pilot payment to the taxes due. And we wanna understand what the rationale is behind that. Okay? But, you know, the buildings, you know, I'm just gonna be referring to my letter of June 24th here as well. You guys had a chance, you don't have that in front of us to refer to, so...
If you have...
It's actually in, it's in this column, right? So Dave, this is your letter, if I'm understanding it right. The CSV response is Dave's letter.
Just broke it down.
With the numbers, right, yeah.
Okay.
And then this is their responses to your letter.
Okay.
There's a couple of overarching points that I wanna make. And the tax assessor has referred on several occasions to our articles of agreement in developing her rationale for the taxability of these structures. And when I looked at the material that she sent us, she had two sections highlighted. And if you choose, well, I used to call it cherry picking contracts. If you choose to cherry pick the articles of agreement, one might come to the conclusion that she did. However, you know, I wanna ask the board to really take a look at the entire document, letters of agreement, in its entirety. Okay, because where she may have highlighted a section B in Article 1, I could go back and point to section B. And the key words in the articles of agreement relative to facilities are in connection with the mission. So the question's gonna come down to, well, what's really in connection with? My point is gonna be, anything that we choose to do with our facilities based on our articles of agreement can be construed to be in connection with our mission of preserving the Shaker legacy in the facilities. Okay? So right there is point and counterpoint relative to what our articles of agreement might say. So when we take a look at the buildings, you know, if we choose to rent out the building for some purpose, that money just gets plowed right back into the preservation of the artifacts and the preservation of the structures, helps us make payroll for the people who are there to do that kind of stuff. And I'm talking high level right now, not any necessary specific buildings. Alright, let's just kinda go through some of these buildings real quick.
Okay.
Okay? And... The first one, let's talk about the East House, which is building number 6 on lot 228-007.
That's the last one on your list.
Yeah.
That's the last one. Okay? Up until October of 2023, our executive director lived in the East House. Alright. On the advice of our accountants, we found it necessary to do several things. First, we wanted to have the executive director resident on the campus, because it has somebody living there continuously who could respond to anything. And after talking to the accountants, they basically told us that if the person is living there at the sole convenience of the organization, and that's the key right there, for the convenience of the organization, their income, you know, the income construed from that building is not taxable. Okay? And I'm gonna bring the same point here, is that the reason we have somebody or had somebody there is solely for the convenience of the organization. And, you know, consequently, we never perceived it as a junior benefit to anybody. Okay, the IRS didn't consider it a benefit, a person a benefit, we didn't consider a person a benefit. The other piece in the equation that the assessor brings up is, it's on our Form 990. The box that was for Leslie at that time, where executive director was checked off as an officer of corporation. Well, that accounting firm no longer works for us. We reviewed it with our current accounting firm. What you guys were looking at was the 2022 Form 990. We're getting ready to submit the 2023 990. And on the advice of our accountants, we're unchecking that box and simply listing the executive director as a key employee.
Am I misunderstanding then what our council said, which they concur that the director is not an officer?
Our director is not an officer.
That's what...
And that's what our council had said, if, which might, it might actually help for you to be able to see what the, how the...
Right.
How the council weighed in, because...
I'm glad you brought that up, because like I said, I'm just going, you know, I haven't looked at the document. Erin's gonna kind of prompt me on what's on the document, I'm gonna talk to what's in the letter.
And Erin, just to be clear, you're not living there, correct?
I am now, actually. I am living there, running here in town. So when Dave sent this letter, that was in June.
Yeah, yeah.
And they didn't know that they were gonna, when they would be hiring, they didn't know that that would also be part of this. So yes, that is, I am living there, and I am not an officer.
Right, and that's, and that's what we've got in front of us. And I think, again, what the, what our assessor is advising anyway, if I'm reading this right, is that what she wants to see is a much more detailed A9. And that's on most of these cases, correct?
And I think, yeah, that's one thing I read in the minutes, is that, you know, we can certainly do differently going forward, now that we know that we weren't providing accurate or sufficient, or whatever the problem was. We can certainly do that differently and better going forward. And I think that will address a lot of these problems going forward. They won't address them for the current year, but they'll address them going forward, for sure.
Is that correct? They won't address them for the current year?
Well, me doing a better A9 next year won't fix it for this year that we're talking about. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The tax bill, the tax bill's already gone out.
Correct.
You have the ability to abate the tax bill if you so choose, but the bill's already gone out based on the assessor's findings earlier this year.
Correct, but with different information. I cannot say what the result might be, but the updated information, the bulk of the information which we don't have now, it'll help. But that's most of these. And, you know, again, for that one, for the East House, the, you know, our council weighed in, it sounds like...
Fascinating. Now I just happen to flip over to the back side.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think on that one, if we correct, again, now that we are checking our 990 differently, and if we fill out a better A9 to clarify, I think, going forward, this one will go away. Then we'll just have to think about how it's gonna go back.
And just looking around above that at the creamery.
Yep.
If it's not being used, supports the exemption, so we're good there.
Right. Now, Mr. Katz, just so we're clear, that building has not been used this year for any purpose?
What, the creamery?
The creamery.
Yeah, we have the employee apartment upstairs, but for any kind of cafe or other use like that.
Right.
Now, if the first floor is not being used at all, we have no intention of starting up anything there in the near future.
Okay. And the second floor is Andy's apartment?
It's a...
Todd's.
It's an employee housing.
Okay. Alright.
And because that was employee housing, that didn't, that wasn't what made the building taxable.
No.
Right, you're saying, it was the lease to an outside vendor to do the creamery.
That is correct.
And so that, so that is not happening anymore.
Okay.
But there is some use downstairs as museum. There is an open exhibit in the, on the other side of the lower level of the creamery.
Right, so the public is just coming in.
But a museum use, but a use, not a cafe.
I understand.
Okay, Andy's apartment?
Yep.
Okay, looks like your council concurs, fulfills exempt purpose. You did that?
Yep.
Seems a lot easier to read what council...
Well, it is.
Take your time, please.
Like I said, it's the first time we've seen this, and to try, you know, I'm just, I'm not good on two-sided documents.
You could, um...
Alright. And then the barn, the north shop and the garden barn suggest more info on the extent of use, how many days farms are used, since the state wants to contradict the building as deteriorating. No longer, but they will make it available to exempt organizations. Well, let's put it this way, Dave's talking about the horse barn.
All three.
Alright, well, I think in my letter, we only talked about how the horse barn is deteriorating. Well, actually, all the buildings are deteriorating. The point being, for the horse barn, we no longer market it for weddings or anything like that. And I'll reuse that. The thrust of the assessment was for the external, for other commercial leasing of that building. We're not doing that anymore. We think marketing weddings is no longer on the right side.
And all of that would be made clear on more detailed A9.
Right.
Is there an opportunity to do a new A9 now, or is it better, do we do it annually? We wait till next year, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Functions facilities, I don't understand, council said that the function facility would qualify as the funds... What function facility is being referred to here, not the...
I think it refers to each of these...
The north shop?
For that use. Yeah.
But it's... Whichever of those buildings you would be renting out for functions?
Yeah, but again, it's saying that they would, they support the exempt purpose. So that is considered related business income, not unrelated.
Right.
So that's also okay.
And right now, with the north shop, we held our Simply Shaker there. So, and we also use that for exhibits and things like that. So I guess we could clarify that on the A9 as well.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. And just trying to think if there's anything else. Pretty much covered it, huh?
Yeah, I think, I think we hit...
So the one that I haven't had time to think about is the conservation land, so we'll have to worry about that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, do you guys, do you think in, I don't know, the next select board meeting, are you ready?
To talk about that?
Yeah.
And that's in two weeks?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that? I have your...
If you came back in two weeks at our next select board meeting, would you be ready to discuss?
Yeah.
They'll have, you know, much more time to go through what was replied and how it jives with what your, what your letter had said.
I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think we're in agreement on several of the others.
Yeah, I believe we are. But like I said, forgive me because I was a little perturbed over the lack of communication.
Understood. Apologies for that. No matter where I've worked, it seems as though communication is one of the things that...
Do you think this nature conservancy case is something that Google and the Internet will lead me to, or is it something that someone could send me a link to? How about if I try to find it and if I can't find it, I email you?
Sure, I was going to say, why don't, let me give you my card.
Okay.
Has my email address on it, phone number. And then you can contact me with yours and I can pass it on to the assessor. It might be easier if the two of you guys talk about it.
Okay, that would be great.
And access for communication purposes in the future. Now we'll have your information.
Please, you know, and like I say, Scott, it would have been good to have that one page before we got here, so we tended to supply in the...
Agreed. Instead, we're here for fifteen.
Fifteen? Always good to see you guys, sir.
Exactly.
And which, which particular, who has weighed in on this? Which council were we dealing with at this time?
Um, I believe it was Mike.
It was Mike. So, you know, if Mike is citing it, he'll also know exactly which case he was talking about, so...
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Redwriting it or whatever, you'll get those...
Sure, they'll pop it out there.
Okay, so the next meeting is in two weeks, up to October 21st with 6:00 PM work?
October 21st at 6:00 PM. At least one of us will be here.
Yeah, I can make that work. Okay, sounds great.
You know, it might work because my wife and daughter will be in Chicago.
All righty.
What better thing to do with a night out than come here, look it up?
No, my youngest daughter lives in Chicago, so maybe if the girls get together, that's the old fifth wheel, you know, how that goes. Excited.
Well, thank you.
Good to meet you.
All right, we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Happy reading.
Yeah, we'll talk to you.
I'm in, I'm in Absorbers like you tend to be, so I'm reading one.
And you too. Thanks for all you do.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Great, thanks for having me tonight.
All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this time on the AFG grant.
You need to accept it.
You need to accept it.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the AFG assistance to firefighters grant from FEMA in the amount of $71,895. Looking for a second.
So seconded.
Why aren't they the same? Wait, I was going to say it's seventy-one...
Seventy-one, eight hundred and ninety-five cents.
So...
So there was an error, that's all.
In ours.
In ours.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
That was not bad.
It happens.
No chocolate for you.
So looking for a second. All those in favor, right? Good with that? And then we still got some time before the six o'clock hearing. Folks, are you here to address the board?
Not address the board, but we're present for the hearing if you have any questions.
Perfect. So the six o'clock hearing?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. You've got a little time if you want to relax, but we'll start at six. All right. Ken, what are you thinking?
Point of the ballot.
Yep, yep.
We received an email from Jim Miller, the moderator, about the, um, concern was brought up about our ballot clerks, the upcoming election, action for all elections. The ballot handbook, or the handbook says that you have to have, you have to have a representative of each party, political party, present as your, in the election, as ballot clerks. We do, we had a Republican that was identified, we do a lot of the more, so we have to find one. We have, we have a Democrat, we have a bunch of undeclareds, but we don't have a Republican. So I talked with Sam today. He's going, it is the selectors' responsibility. Typically, the party forwards names to the board of the selector, and they approve. You haven't reached anything from the, you see that name from the party, so the selector have to...
And who would that be? What representative of the Republican Party would that be who would forward those names?
It would be the Republican, the New Hampshire GRP would forward that to them.
And have we reached out to them to...
We haven't, no, we haven't.
Okay.
We haven't.
And we can't look through our voter list?
You can look through the checklist and see who's registered as Republicans. Sam has talked to a couple of people. I know Jim Moore has a suggestion here. I think what it's going to boil down to is, is you guys meeting or at least having a discussion with a couple of candidates, see if they want to be a ballot clerk and if they can work with the ballot clerks and make the scheduled elections and things like that.
There is some training that's required.
There is some training, there's online training that's required, so...
Since we talked this morning, I called three people who are all registered independent, which was interesting. But all of them asked the same question, which was, would they be required to be there for the entirety of the voting, or are we planning on splitting it up into like two, four hour shifts?
So it would depend on how many people we got.
Okay, yeah.
If we only have one, then it'd probably be all day.
Yeah.
If we have multiple, then we can split the shift.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that was their, that was their big concern, and they're also going to ask anyone that they left out. Yeah, everyone seems to.
So hopefully by the next meeting, we will have some candidates for you to talk to.
And can we, at what time, as you said, we can look through our voter checklist?
Can. Voter checklist is a public document, and you can look through it.
Are they, they're currently in our town hall? I mean, in the town offices?
Yeah, at the town office.
Okay. That's good, because we know, you know, our community members who might be willing to do that kind of service.
Yeah.
It's a long day.
It is.
So, if we could find three, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Uh, the next thing is the update of the town building rental policy.
Yep.
Uh, we have a policy, um, there's two things that we started to look through and calmed some, some, uh, editing. One of them is on the, um, the facilities use agreement. We currently have a requirement for a $1 million policy, insurance policy. And we typically went out to buy the showers and baby showers and things like that, so we're, we're not to worry about having a $1 million insurance policy for somebody that's having an event like that. So we're thinking about changing that. I was going to contact, contact our insurance company to find out. I think this is probably a recommendation at one point, but we didn't really know what we were going to be renting out for, so that was why we put the cost at that. So it was that, and then, um, and then the question came up about limiting the types of events that happened there. One of the things on the policy is alcohol. We serve, we allow serving of alcohol, but only by vendors, bartenders or caterers that have proof of insurance and their servers are trained in and like that. Um, if, if we do that, one of the things that we had on air at the time was that if alcohol is being consumed on a premises, then a police officer has to be present, and they will be charged the overtime, the on-duty rate for the police officer.
Is that, is that normal for...
Normal for most municipalities, general properties. We can say that you can't consume alcohol on a town property, and that would, or we could, we could change that to anything. We could say, well, you can have tastings, but you can't have anything served in more than, like at the farmer's market, anything more than served in like a ounce or two ounce. You can, they can, they can buy a bottle to go or something like that, but that's it. But that has to be through a certified vendor. And that would probably, that would release people, the need for a police officer there.
What, what buildings in particular do these, does it spell out which buildings this refers to?
It does not. It's any, you can't, any, any Canterbury town building. This building, the town hall.
But the town building's not the parish house?
Correct.
They have their own.
That, that's, that's not a town building.
Okay.
That is...
Just, just want to make sure.
Do we include the library or...?
We include the library.
And up at the municipal center too, if anybody, we still rent that out?
Correct. Yep, yep.
Essentially outdoor, then, the gazebo, then?
Correct. Yep. So I think the best thing for you guys to do is to review this.
Yep.
Um, think about what we, a little bit what we talked about tonight. And what we'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll send out the old ones, then we'll do the proposed one. And again, I'll talk with our insurance company to see what they are recommending for insurance coverage now.
Yeah.
And then we'll talk, have to listen for next meeting.
I guess the, the only question that immediately comes to mind is the amount of $48 per hour for a police officer.
That was updated to 65.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
In that proposal.
Which makes more sense.
Um, okay. Is there any, well, we haven't read this yet, but is there anything in here that says some sort of timeframe on when they have to, I mean, so again, they want to serve alcohol and they want to reserve time to have some, one of our police officers be there. Do they, do we need two weeks notice? Is there any kind of timeframe on here for when you need to fill out and submit this?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put a timeline on this as far as reserving the police officers. I think that would be, I mean, in all reality, it could be a police officer in another town, just a detail, just how you do it for traffic and things like that.
All right.
Yep.
Could off-duty do it too, if somebody wanted to? Or if you didn't say?
Probably how they would do it.
Okay.
Yeah, inject that with somebody, yeah. Yeah, it would be a detailed pen, just like if they're doing traffic or at the racetrack or something like that.
All right.
When do we want to, um...
I'll, we'll send out this information, we'll email it to you guys, and then we'll put it out for the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. Kind of over it, done. Thank you.
And then just, uh, this is, this isn't on the agenda, but just a quick note for you guys. I think we let you know that we've been working with QuickBooks, an update of QuickBooks, and we had, we lost the changeover, we've been working on this for months, and found out that they can't do our payroll, if that just doesn't work. So we've checked into some, we checked around a lot of municipalities, see what they do. And there's a payroll company in Concord that does payroll for a lot of the municipalities, small towns like us. The costs are very similar to what we were paying QuickBooks for our subscription. We would still maintain QuickBooks for our college payable, but our payroll would be switched over to a payroll company. And the cost is very similar, so it's within a few hundred dollars for here.
Oh, interesting.
We're, I'd like to move forward to that, unless you guys have any objection, any kind of internal thing, but we just...
If, if QuickBooks can't do it, then it seems like a gap.
It was a labor.
Does that, does that relieve any work from either Cal or Mary?
The labor costs are...
Yeah, the labor costs are, the total overall cost is, it looks like it's about $800 more here. As far as the labor it's going to take, um, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it'll give, give them a little bit of a break, but we still have to, we still have to collate everything, get the time cards, send them in, make sure they're correct.
Yeah.
There's, there's still some administrative time in this. It's not going to, they're not going to gain.
No.
They may have worked, we...
Days. No, there's, just looking at the time cards, that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
All right, so they just have to prepare everything to send it to the company? They do all the number crunching and put it in the system and... If that's, if that's what we need to do, if QuickBooks can't do it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. If it's closed?
Ken, makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay. It's your hands.
Thanks for letting us know. Sorry we couldn't get you an extra day off, John.
Action item review?
Yeah.
Did you work? We're getting close to six.
So we, we have before you the updated action item list. I will say that on the one where I have contacted Mike Wissloff one more time.
Yep.
I spoke to him on the 26th and told him we have a deadline of the 15th. If we don't hear back from him by then, we are going to search out other contractors.
Okay. And we have not...
And I haven't heard from him yet. What's this for? The third rose.
This is Mike Wissloff who's working with Art Room, or...
He was going to call, he was going to call Art that day and get back to me, and I have not heard anything from either, either one of them. The Comcast, I spoke with Brian Christensen today.
Oh, he did, great.
He is promised to have a, a re-edited version of the, the new language of the franchise agreement by the next select board meeting. He did say that all the Canterbury addresses that they are funding have been released, which means the construction can start, the people should be starting to get notified and, and if anybody, what I thought I would do is, I asked him about the notification process, and he said, yes, the salespeople were supposed to be notifying them. But he said if we wanted to post something on Town email and the website that we could put out, that they could, people could stop calling Comcast to see if they can...
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting, I think, that they were going to give us the addresses.
They were supposed to do it, but he, I was talking on the phone today and he was driving between meetings.
Okay.
He's a very busy person.
Never the best way to talk to someone.
Ken, what about that thousand foot?
So the BMGI addresses, there's 20 or 30 of them that are being funded by BMGI. And these are the dresses that have the real long driveways and they're looking for money to assist. And he said they, the BMGI money was approved by the executive council, and it should be, those addresses should be released soon. He felt there was 20 or 30 of them that, that were out there that, that they, they have from there.
Yeah. How about that specific area in Westbrook and the all...
Talk about that. He said, yes, that is on there in here.
Okay.
Yep.
So even without the list of addresses, if we, we should basically put out something that says, here's the number?
Yes, I think we can, we can post on the website and Town email that people should stop trying to call Comcast to see if they are available for connection.
Yeah.
And by we, we mean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we just staffed with the...
By we, meaning you. Thank you.
Yeah, I did talk to Calvin Tyre up on Sunset Hill.
Yeah.
He has.
Yeah, they've gone, they've gone right up to Hockleboro. Is there any way that we can get a copy of the rewritten part before the meetings?
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna email it to me.
Okay, perfect.
He will email it to me, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Um, let's see. Still working on the coop?
Yeah.
Uh...
Added a bunch more stuff to the draft code of conduct, though it's gotten, uh, I've got my pile is getting bigger of things to put into it.
Yep.
Uh, so we're slogging forward slowly.
Couple things that, um, are, didn't make it from the last meeting. Um, Old Schoolhouse Road, um, I met with John, uh, representative of some Eversource and the Pullins. Uh, we met there on the third, um, and agreed to some work that, that we've done. So that, that's all set.
Yep. Has Mr. Pollan done the work that he was going to with?
He has lots.
Okay.
He has lots.
He's, he's still intent to, as far as you know?
He said, said he's still intent to, he's working at it slowly.
Yeah.
Uh, removing locks from that wall.
Okay, yep.
Trying to get ready, uh, but it's still, still there.
Okay.
And then, uh, the wiring at the town hall, I met with Larry Martin in the slot on Saturday. Uh, the wire was taken care of, um, and they're gonna, uh, maybe with Brett Cockler at some, some point in the future, and set a date to go through everything that's down in the basement of the hall. To determine what can be cleaned up, taken away, whatever, so...
So, do we know who put the wiring?
We do. Yep.
Yes, I, I hate to say I want to be there when the basement gets cleaned up, 'cause I have a bad feeling a lot of that stuff is gonna end up in my garage. Which, which is not good, but...
And I think that's it for action items.
Yep. Paul, the other one is, the new grader is in. You guys know? Up in the hill? Yep. It came in last Tuesday, the first, was there at seven-thirty in the morning. Um, John's gonna take the wing off of it, and he did get trained up on it. Um, the salesman was in on Wednesday and went through everything. It is, uh, quite a bit different from the one they were using.
I'll bet.
Uh, it does not have a steering wheel.
What's that?
Two joysticks. And buttons and a computer screen. So, uh, there's gonna be a little bit of a learning curve. Uh, but John went through the salesman for several hours and, uh, but again, he's up there by himself now, so he's gonna get the wing off. And so, uh, her bachelor, the fire car is gonna help him get the wing off. I told him that if he needed to hire his brother or somebody else that, to help him, that he could. I didn't want him doing something alone, so...
No, that would not be good. Um, does the training on the equipment, is that included in the price?
Yes.
The salesman sitting here for hours and does as much as we need for John to feel comfortable with that?
John has his cell phone number, and if there's questions, he can call him and...
That's great.
Either have him come up and show him how to do something or walk it through him on the phone, so...
Can he come fly, can he come breathe for a little bit on a day?
I did ask, I did ask him, he was looking for some, some time behind the seat, and he said, no, not really.
Jeez. Couple of hours, I'll buy him lunch.
I guess as long as we're sort of on that topic, I assume no applicants for...
Uh, we did interview one applicant last Thursday. Uh, have not heard back from him. Uh, we got the, the law in his court, so to speak, or I haven't heard back, so...
Are we paying a competitive salary, I guess it's?
No. Well, no, not, not in this draw market. Uh, the problem is, we have a budget. We have plenty of money this year because the budget, we wanted to bump the payout to what the market is today. Next year, our budget would, our wage line would increase substantially.
Yep.
And then the problem is, where is the parity with the police, fire, transfer station, things like that? If you're gonna bump up salary, you know, twenty, thirty percent, then what about the other employees?
Unless their, their salaries are already...
That's true. I did...
What the market bears.
And I will tell you, I've been getting emails from, uh, I'm part of a dis serve for, uh, town managers and, and administrators, and, uh, everybody's talking about, about this. And, um, what the raise is gonna be, what's current salary. I got a wage, uh, the New Hampshire Police Chiefs Association did a wage survey for pretty much every town in the city and the state, so I have that. Um, again, we have to look at the towns that are similar to Canterbury and, you know, we, we're on the low end of that, um, not bottom, but we are on the lower end. So it's, it's, you know, uh, and then there's towns that the salary is, is a certain percentage or is a certain, uh, level. And, but the city of Lebanon is, uh, giving a thirty thousand dollar sign-on bonus for police officers.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's payable over seven years.
Still?
But that's thirty thousand dollars they're committed to over above salary.
Yeah.
Um...
Wow.
So that is the hiring, uh, situation right now in, in the municipal world.
But at the, at the moment, our police and fire are well-staffed and they're, as I say, they're okay with that, obviously with their...
Yeah, I mean, you've got to...
I mean, even they would understand the fact that we, the desperate need for highway people, that they may come first in line.
I can't tell you what people did.
No, I know.
I can't tell you what people did.
I know.
It's, uh, and with the draw market the way it is.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's what I would say, you have to be very careful on, um, so, yeah.
Okay, big discussion of the budget.
I agree. I think that the budget committee is gonna be a, a big topic of discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, a meeting with, um, two different healthcare providers, uh, for insurance. Their town looking at a couple of different plans. Our current provider is the Health Trust, and then, uh, the New Hampshire Department of the Trust is another provider in the city area. And we're looking at what our current plan would be versus a high deductible with a HSA that, uh, is partially funded by the town.
Yep.
So, uh, we're looking at those two options to see what we can do.
That's okay.
And, and, yeah, I've been getting information from our towers on potential raises and things like that, so... Should have some information for you to rate for a member.
Have any of the discussions between, you know, if you're listed for, for town admins, talked about trying to pool somehow to get...
Employee sharing?
Employee sharing, especially for highway.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I would assume that'd be a pretty active discussion.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the discussion centers around, I guess, the, the logistics of it.
Yeah.
Um, insurance, purpose comp, things like that. Uh, how does all that work? And so that, you know, that has, and, and we have to look at, you know, if we shared with another town that had a different insurer, how is that handling the thing at heart?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or, or retirement benefits, some, some towns have different retirement benefits. So there's some logistics around that. That, that's the topic of discussions. There's not, not the need for it or the, the possibility of doing it, but the logistics.
The logistics, yeah, it's gotta be, it's a sticky, pretty, wow, okay. Thank you.
Um, gutters?
Gutters are on.
Oh, there are?
They're on.
I didn't look.
Yes, the gutters are on the Down's folks. Seem to be working.
Good.
I came down early this morning when I came in, I was raided, I pulled into the parking lot, looked and...
No puddles around this?
Yeah, I think it's been dry enough, there's no puddles around the building. Um, I think we'll have to go for a while and see where the water wants to go and then figure out what we can do for drinking. Yeah.
Checking you off the list here.
Everything's done.
Yeah.
Uh, we're getting pretty close to six.
We are, yeah. Anything else from our list?
Let's see.
Me neither. Uh, this is sort of related. We, have we found somebody to work on a regular basis at the dump again, or where, where are we?
Um, well, Andrew's back from vacation.
He is.
So, we should be good for now unless one has to be out for something.
Okay.
Um, for bachelor, helped out a couple of times up there. Went in after, after his shift up to the piles and offered to help, so...
I showed up sad, but Dave said he was all sad.
Yeah, there was, um, I, I think I did send you an email, uh, forwarded you an email from Steven Rascher.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess you...
And there's, there's not a problem with any of us jumping out and lending a hand if they need it?
Again, it's, yeah, let's see, if you want volunteer up there, just, just play a thing.
That's not my yellow shiny vest.
There you go. Put on a vest and you're all set.
All set.
You're gonna be close, I guess.
Enough.
Right, two minutes left.
In which one count?
There's, uh, appointments, so right there, should be one or two.
Yep, thank you.
And there's a time up there.
Should've known better.
Are you all here for the One Carter Hill meeting stuff?
Very.
Can I get people's names, so that as I do minutes, I can indicate who's staying in the lot for it? Okay.
Rebecca Davis.
Okay, Ben.
Hi, Danielle Bell. Who's the last name?
Belle. Tracy Leclerc.
Mike Leclerc.
Thank you.
So I think we're close enough. It's a minute or two before, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Um, so this is a public hearing per RSA six seventy-four and six seventy-six dash seventeen A, um, to determine if there was an obnoxious use per Canterbury zoning ordinance article two point one at One Carter Hill Road, map two forty-seven, lot twenty-seven. So I'll open the public hearing at this point.
Um, just a, a little bit of history of, of the property. Um, we were notified, uh, a couple of months ago. I can't, I don't have the dates, it's probably on emails there. Um, some of the neighbors wrote letters. Uh, one neighbor came in, complained about the property. He contacted the owner, uh, and on the first notice was for the use of, uh, because it was, we notified it was a, a business being run out of the property, and there had been no special exception filed with the, with the ZDA. Um, we found afterwards through email that that business was not actually being run. Um, and through subsequent emails with the owner, um, that at this point, uh, there is, uh, steps being taken by the owners to, uh, evict the, the tenant of the building and take care of the situation. So, that's kind of where we are, what kind of loss and speed. You guys have copies of emails and things and pictures and...
Ken, just for the record, the, uh, earliest email that I can find is May of twenty twenty-four.
Sure. Yep.
All right.
The only copy that we have here tonight is what you're opening out right there.
I mean, I don't, we have it all.
Yeah, we, I didn't, we didn't put multiple copies.
Okay.
Do you guys have copies?
In my, in my email account that I'm not looking at now, but I have a paper coming.
I'll sort of point these toward the middle, and if you guys want to refer to any of the wallwork for doing this. Folks, you were here first, so...
I'll allow them to speak first.
Very good.
Please.
Folks, please come up, have a seat.
Okay.
Or did you, did you want to speak, I guess is the first question?
Yes.
Okay, then please come up and have a seat.
I moved in, I live at thirty-five, five road. And I have two choices when I come out of my road, to go left or right.
Yep.
More often I'm going right to go to the center of downtown. And, uh, there are several times that I have come upon someone parked on the paving of the intersection of Carter Hill Road and one thirty-two. And that's, at best times, it's not a, a junction where there's a lot of visual room.
Right.
Uh, sometimes there are people standing in the road. And the most important thing, I think, is that, uh, there are three at least school bus stops in a very short, um, space there, morning and about three-thirty in the afternoon. And it can get, uh, a little bit dicey.
Those school bus stops are on Carter Hill was?
Where Carter Hill Road, uh, joins, intersects one thirty-two.
But the, the bus, the buses on one thirty-two or Carter Hill just?
One thirty.
One thirty-two, yeah.
On one thirty-two, and they keep going on one thirty-two.
Got it.
But...
They're right through that intersection, yeah, okay.
With the trees and, and so forth. There isn't a lot of visual space.
Rebecca Davis and her daughter, they live at thirty-four, five road. I also can go left or right at the end of her road. Um, my main concern with the property is traffic stopped in the road, parked in the road, um, at all times of the day and night, and not very visible because there aren't no lights or anything moving the cars. Um, so, I don't wanna judge people on how they keep their properties. It is not the most attractive, but that's not my issue, it's more the safety concern for people, you know, going up and down the road, you know, around the corner.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Um, Ben, did you want to speak or, or no?
They probably covered anything I was gonna say.
Your, your role involved probably to address the board.
Okay, sure. Uh, I'm, I'm sure, um, well, I'm Ben Davis. I live on Pogswell Road and I frequently travel between Pogswell and White Road. Um, in doing so, I drive by One Carter Hill. Um, over the last year, I don't know, two, um, there's been more and more, um, uh, junk in the yard, so much that you can't park a vehicle. And this is just my observation. You can't park a vehicle in the driveway, which leaves people to park on the side of the road, in the road, um, more times than not, in the lane of travel. Um, and as you know, it's a bad intersection there, um, you know, so it's, it's really a safety hazard. Aside from the fact that you drive by midnight, one o'clock in the morning, there's, which, there's vehicles there, you know, running, there's people outside, it's, it's just kind of, kind of suspicious. I mean, that's, that's their property, they can do what they want, but it's just kind of, it's a mind thing, so... That's just my observation.
Okay.
Probably I forgot everything I said. Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ben.
Folks, did you want to speak?
Does that mean somebody has joined us? Martha DiBolli, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, did she wanna, did she wanna speak before I speak?
Martha, can you hear me?
She's muted.
It looks that way.
Okay.
I can check that. Is that her, uh, that's muting or us that's muting her?
Uh, she can unmute, she's able to unmute herself if she wants, so, okay.
My name's Mike Leclerc. I'm the brother of Tim. Tim is, um, has some mental health issues. My father is unavailable right now. I empower the attorney. So, where we're at right now is the, the eviction notice, he's not a paid tenant. He's the son of our father, obviously, he's my brother, and, uh, Dave Leclerc is in one of the property. Several times you mentioned Danielle Bell, uh, my sister, uh, she's not an owner.
Okay.
She's a, she's a successor of the trust. Um, so my father is the sole owner. Um, I'm just speaking for the family right now. So my brother Tim has some mental health issues. Um, we, we tried to work with him as much as we could. There's some processes that slow us down a little bit. My father had to file for bankruptcy a couple of years ago. The house is not in bankruptcy, no, but it's in bankruptcy. The, the plan is to sell the house. Um, my father no longer wants to live there. Um, some quick history, moved to Canterbury about forty-two years ago. I currently am a resident. I currently am a resident of about one, any ten-year, like the plan were official, so I'm very used to. I'm not aware I work at Canterbury Market Basket. This is what I wear work every day. The process because of that bankruptcy slowed things down just a little bit. There's also been quite a lengthy process to get an eviction. We are working with the court system right now. Time limits are over at this point. We're just waiting for the final letter so that we can have the sheriff's department, who could be moving the chains of locks. We have people coming, ready to have chains of locks. We have lawyers ready to sell the house. We have a realtor hired. We are literally days away from what we hope to be peaceful, moving, moving along.
This must be very hard for you. Thank you for coming to talk with us.
Yes, not easy, yeah, doing this to your brother, but but he's got, he's got some, some issues that he's gotta work through himself. But this is to protect my father more than anyone.
So you see this resolving itself in a few days or weeks or?
I, I'm waiting on the court. So the process is, is doing the six, this report house in Palm Beach. So we go there, we file petition for removal because of the damage to the property. I didn't have to wait thirty days in this case. We waited, had to do seven days. And then well, we started back in May. We served it, I believe, June first. But the documents that we used weren't correct, so that goes back a little bit to weird thirty days. The paperwork that I provided, the sheriff's department would recognize it. So that was my mistake. So what we have today, waiting for the court because he is also allowed some time. Now, worst case scenario, the judge could allow him ninety days. In which case, there's nothing I can do about it. So that's the maximum that the court will allow a tenant to stay in the property. Because of the amount of, I'm sorry, the economic, the rents and whatnot, the courts, from what I was told from several lawyers, that they're being very lenient right now. Where we went in with that he's damaging the property and he's making it unsaleable. We're, we're hoping that we have a quicker resolution. That's all I can do.
And, and once that is resolved, however, hopefully satisfactorily with your brother and peacefully, and did you say you have a realtor involved to then sell the property?
So once he's removed, we're gonna clean the property up. We'll start with the outside of the house. And we'll put a sales sign on.
Thank you for your time on this one.
Yeah, this is not easy. And the courts don't help. Their scheduling doesn't make it easier.
The courts have been very helpful and very understanding stuff, but there is, there is a legal process.
Okay.
Do you have a next date for court?
No, we're waiting on the paperwork to come back because the it should be, it should give me a date where, you know, have a date on it that the
May?
Yeah, apparently this is all good.
Yeah, so, so in the process it's the Tracy waiting talking about the, um, in the process, we, Michael returned, they, you give the paper to the sheriff's department, they serve, then it gets mailed back to us so that you can drive back down to the courthouse and bring back yours to see whether or not the tenant has responded. So last week, we did ours within that time. The tenant still, Timothy still was had it all day Tuesday. We don't know if he responded or not. And we wait for them to send us back either a court date when we go and sit before a judge for the next step if Timothy hasn't.
Or a writ.
Or a writ to go. So we just check the mail and wait. That's how we were notified when he was officially served. It's not a, there's no email correspondence. There's no.
And I do apologize for not seeing you. I don't use email.
No problem.
And then it came across then, like, okay, so now I have set for notifications. I see all the emails now.
Okay, yeah. Well, I can see why they'd want to do it physically by mail because of, you know, even that reason.
There has to be documented process and there is a lot of that.
Yeah. Okay. What else do we need to know?
Did you folks have any other questions?
No, thank you.
So I guess I'm gonna decide to move forward with this part because if the eviction, if the eviction process failed for some reason, that, that's the concern is. If somehow the eviction process fails or gets delayed. And, and we've seen it, unfortunately, we've seen it with other towns.
In, in this case, it's not gonna happen. I totally understand what you're talking about. My father can no longer afford their property. He's seventy, oh, he's seventy-four years old.
Yeah.
He's still working. He wants to retire.
Sure.
We get it. Property's been a nice work for a long time now.
Yeah.
That's the, the mental health coming through. And we've worked several times. My sister and I have been there to try to clean up the front, make him mow the lawn, clean up the side of the street. But my father's washed his hands of it. It's, it's broken immensely.
Yeah.
My sister's a Canterbury resident. My mother's still a Canterbury resident. My uncle's a Canterbury resident.
Yeah.
So Mike, can we target a date by which you'll have possession if you had to, to give me an educated?
I can't know, well, I, it wouldn't be.
We don't know what, whether or not the tenant responded. He still had time to respond. If he responded, then the court has to set a time for a hearing. And that will be notified to go to a hearing. At that hearing, they'll, then they'll even say how long whether they find for us and it's a shorter period of time or for the tenant and it's longer.
Yeah.
There's, we have probably no history in going through this process before. So we'd even speculate as to, because it could come back that they did not, Timothy did not respond. And therefore, he's saying that he's, I guess, okay with eviction. But then they'll tell us the next steps we can take. And again, having not done it, we're not sure if the writ comes through immediately, if it comes through with another date. The writ is what we have to then bring to the sheriff's department to have them act on it.
Yeah.
And what was the ninety days? You said there was a ninety day timeframe, but what does that refer to?
So when a tenant and a landowner have a dispute and say the, say the landowner wins, the tenant sometimes has up to ninety days to, to quit, to leave the promise. I don't think that will happen in this case, but it is very possible.
Yeah.
So where does that leave us with the hearing that we have now, the obnoxious use? Does it, do we continue?
Well, we have testimony, I think, of valid safety concerns.
Yes.
We also have previous complaints from neighbors about debris blowing into their yards. So it really is, how do we want to proceed from here? It's really up to us.
I should be getting something from the courthouse within the week. Unfortunately, we're also at the mercy of the mail system.
Understood.
So as soon as I get that document, I will order a copy to Ken. And that will, that will tell you exactly where we're at. But the, that house will be sold. He will be removed. That, that is, there's no way going back. The house can't, my father can't afford the house anymore.
Yeah.
He's got another piece of property. He's living half in the United States and half in another country right now. He just mentally, he just does not want to deal with his, with his son.
The, the process for the obnoxious use, if you find it's a violation, the next process is to notify the owner of, of your finding and file for a cease and desist. And that goes through the process of the court where you would file for injunctive relief in the form of fines for the order. Now, fines are, are up to the presiding judge to determine what the fine should be. That could be up to two hundred fifty dollars a day. So if you, if you find that this is obnoxious use and you feel you want to issue a cease and desist, then that's the process that moves forward. I, I think just speaking as, about this whole thing, the tough part about it is it, it goes back to the owner of the property, not to the tenant.
Correct.
So as we've heard, the, the owner of the property is trying to do something, it has the courts involved, so, you know. I'm not sure, just my opinion, I'm not sure penalizing the owner is gonna speed up the court process.
That doesn't seem to help anything.
Yeah, I don't know that it'll speed up the court process in any way.
Yeah.
I'm of the opinion that we let that sit for a little bit, see what happens with this action on their part. I don't know, just try and take them to court for doing the cause of it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and anguish and, and somebody who's far away is trying his best to rid himself of the, of the property and, and unfortunately the tenant. I would, I would agree.
You can find this obnoxious use. You, it's up to you what the, what the penalty is of finding violation.
I understand. So speaking for myself, my concern is what I've heard from the neighbors, especially with respect to parking in the roadways. And every time I've gone by there, there has been further material being offloaded onto the premises. And I know that's, that's beyond your control, family, and I apologize for that. But I, I agree, Ken, with you that finding the owner of the property is, is not gonna help anyone here. You know, maybe what we can do is ask the police department to give that property extra attention with respect to parking. I know we had some other complaints about some other things that were investigated and and as far as you know, Mike, he is still living there, correct?
Yeah, he's alive.
All right, understood. I get you.
So can we declare, yes, we say this is an obnoxious use? We'll do what we can from the town side of things to take care of the traffic issue, which is, and safety issue, and wait to hear what the court's next step is, which should be imminent, correct?
There should, should be any time now.
That doesn't mean that our obnoxious use, that we couldn't still do penalties in the future, but it doesn't, again, seem like that's going to bother us anymore.
I agree. Yeah, I, I think that's, and you'll stay in contact with Ken.
Yeah, absolutely.
Regarding that, and I think.
The last couple of emails I, I've answered within minutes, all of them.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, folks, that will help at least if we can address the parking concerns and any line of sight concerns. That'll help.
And we have no jurisdiction over stopping the flow of?
No, not at this point.
The tenants.
May I speak just a minute?
Yes.
I, I truly want to apologize. I, I didn't come, or we didn't come here looking to attack anyone. We're just observing the situation and obviously we don't know the underlying, you know, the, you know. We, we've gone through family dynamics like this before and we know how hard it is on everyone. And I, I don't, I don't envy you guys at all for what you're going through. It's, it's a really hard, hard thing to do, but we gotta look at it from our side and, and the safety aspect. I just have a I have a three-month-old and my wife, you know, they walk up and down that road all the time and have a car whip around there and have a van out and, and, yeah, so that's, that's where we're coming from. But I, I don't want there to be any hard feelings between us, you know, and I didn't, I didn't come here with any, you know, any aggression or anything. I just, well, you know where we're coming from.
We're not, we're not on opposite sides.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We, we get that. I mean, clearly you folks are doing your best under very difficult circumstances. And we're not looking to pile on and make things even worse for your dad, really. So.
Unfortunately, there hasn't been much communication since the sheriff's department stopped by.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you allowed to communicate with him if you want him to go?
Oh, absolutely. But he's not, he's not communicating with us.
No, no, I just didn't know if that was, if there was a description against that by the courts or anything.
There isn't. There isn't.
All right.
All right, so.
So we can make that corner safer. That would be, have to go all the way around.
That's kind of what I'm, I'm thinking. And that would be, I know everybody concerned will stay in touch with us with those issues, so. All right, so I'm gonna, I think what makes sense to me is I will make a motion to determine that there is an obnoxious use at number one Carter Hill Road. And the motion will be to also issue a cease and desist order pursuant to RSA six seventy-six seventeen dash A. However, I'm not going to suggest any monetary fines.
Do you just second?
Yes.
Certainly second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So that's where we'll stand with that. There'll be no fines. Cease and desist will go up to the owner of the property, correct?
Ken, can you send that to, to my address in Belmont, Michigan, Brown Hill?
Yeah.
Any, any mail that's being sent to Carter Hill at this point is being?
Yeah. Okay. Makes sense. Yeah, no problem.
Does, um, does it help the courts to know what we decided tonight or not? Doesn't speed them up at all other than to keep a file of?
No, but thank you.
The court, to be clear, he, um, they have all, to the end of business day on Tuesday as a tenant to respond. So I'm sure the earliest it could have been looked at to get, for the next step was Wednesday morning. So we are hopeful that Tuesday or Wednesday, Thursday, we should get something back. But then, so then you got to be on.
Tenant has another five days after that, and then there's an appeal process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything further from anyone here for the public hearing? Sorry.
Thank you very much. I'm good, everybody.
We need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, I motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor? Aye? Public hearing is closed. Thank you all, folks. Good night.
Yeah. Talk about snowplow later?
Yeah.
Try later.
You wanna hang out?
I'll hang out.
Yeah?
For snowplows? We will happily wait on you.
What, do we have anything else on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so while Ben is here, so we are still looking for part-time. Ben.
Seasonal, I guess you call it.
Yeah, so I, I assume from the sounds of things, you're interested in the same arrangement you've had in past years, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We definitely can.
I just hope I don't get sick this winter, that's all.
Yeah, so, believe me.
And, and if you know of any other qualified individuals, let me know.
That's right. We want your friends.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good plug, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Is it okay to tip the plow drivers with chicken soup by big meat?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
In the middle of a snowstorm?
Yeah, we did, I forget, it was chocolate chip cookies to Dave Heath one year.
Yeah.
Which he's really appreciated, so they were fresh out of the oven.
Okay.
Um, I'll just, I don't know where, where you all stand. I, I wanted to I know the Canterbury Facebook page can get kind of muddied and I know you all probably can't post anything on it. But if a town member, you know, just, I'm just trying to think of how to get the word out, like, cause I, I don't know how many people know the dire straits we're actually in. I mean, it's like, yeah, it's pretty, I mean, you know, it's
We need, yeah, we need.
It's not good, yeah.
Well, it's been out, it's been on the town email. It should go to everybody. And the newsletter, the town newsletter website.
Website.
And the town website.
Yeah.
It's, it's also in the town newsletter website too, correct? Yeah. Yeah.
Now, here the last meet, you were gonna advertise in the newspaper?
We did, yeah.
Monitor and union leader.
Parker Monitor and the union leader.
Yeah, and nothing.
We have one application.
We have, we've had one application so far.
Okay.
Word of mouth may be our best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's always.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, um, you have.
There are other municipalities that are the same, not quite the same boat that we're in, but close.
Yeah, yeah. All the states down, what, two hun, two hundred, something driving us, yeah.
Two hundred, you're right, two hundred. I forget the exact number, but it's over two hundred.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not just here, unfortunately. It's everywhere.
Yeah.
We do have one contract truck that's, had said that they would do it. We do have one contract truck that's, had said that they were doing.
Okay. Can you name that person, or you don't want to?
It's Remy's Construction Company.
Oh, okay.
Out of Salisbury or Anover.
How many do we need?
There's five plow crews.
Five roots, okay.
Yeah, that would be ideal. So with John and Ben and this contract, we have three.
Okay. Two out of three, they bad, we can do it. We can do it.
Yep.
All right.
All right, that's it.
That's Ben.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to see where we were at with that.
Glad to have you, Michael.
Yeah, I'm gonna head up to the firehouse now, I haven't been there for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn? I think I will second that motion, but those in favor?
Aye.